Hey everybody, welcome back. It is our ninth session, session number nine on what we're calling 20 for 2020. We're having 20 looks at the book of Revelation and the Bible as a whole for 2020 vision in the year of 2020. This year as we walk through a year unlike any we've ever experienced with now we're we're technically like on day 21 of this shutdown due to the coronavirus and so it's a it's a new year. But we don't want to look back at this year and miss what Jesus is saying to us. We don't want to look back and go, wow, I wish I would have saw that back then. A lot of times when we look back, we say, well hindsight's 2020. But we believe that the word of God, that the Holy Spirit, he desires for our vision to be clear as we look forward, not backwards. So this study is to look forward to what Jesus is doing, what he's going to do and what he has done. We're going to look with eyes of vision and look clearly into the future, into what today has and what tomorrow holds. And so we truly believe that God's going to open up our eyes. So I pray if you're joining us for the first time that you'll check out our previous eight sessions on at WhitestoneChurchTX.com is our website. You can look at them there. You can go to our YouTube channel under the same name or Facebook page. Grab your Bible, grab a piece of paper, grab a pen. We have notes for each session. So tonight I've got like six or seven pages of notes and this is just kind of my guideline. So they're not the best notes in the world, but they will help remind you or as you listen. So if you want a copy of our notes, go to our WhitestoneChurchTX.com website and contact us and request it. Give us your email. We'll send it to you just as soon as possible. Also, if you have some questions, let me know. Tonight I'm going to answer a couple of questions before we get started. Just kind of based upon what we talked about a couple nights ago. And I don't claim to be the authority. I just claim to have an opinion. Can I get amen? So let's pray and we'll get started. So Father God, we thank you for today. And God, this is the day that we that you have made, so we will choose to be glad, we'll choose to rejoice regardless of circumstance, regardless of situation. We choose joy, we choose victory, we choose hope. And God, we choose to trust you in the mighty name of Jesus. Yeshua Hamashiach, Jesus the Christ, the Son of God, the one and only, the Redeemer, the Lamb, the Alpha, the Omega, the first, the last, the beginning, the end, the one who is pursuing you like no one else, the lover of your soul in the mighty name of Jesus. And everybody said, amen. Listen, as we're filming tonight, we are in Passover and so we'll look at what God is doing in our nation, our country, our world. And we are praying that God will pass over and that he will touch you, that God will see you, that you will plead the blood of the Lamb over your doorpost, over your house, and that God will recognize you as one of his own. Amen. Take your Bible. We're going to, let me answer a couple of questions. I have a question in regard to something I said the other night that the martyrs under the altar in Revelation four and five, the martyrs under the altar, they have memory. They remember what they did or what happened to them on earth. And so there's this common idea that because in later in the book of Revelation, chapter 21, he says, "I'll wipe every tear from your eye. There will be no more sorrow or pain." A lot of us interpret that or have been taught that hey, that means we get a memory wipe when we go to heaven, that that we just won't remember this this place. That's not biblical. It's not biblical based upon what the martyrs are remembering. There's time in heaven. We have these examples of time. The rich man in Lazarus, he, the the rich man remembered his brothers on earth and prayed that Lazarus would go tell them about God. So when we pass from this earth, we will remember. Now, how could we remember the tragedy of earth, but yet have no more sorrow and pain? It's because for the very first time, for those who go to heaven, we'll see Jesus face to face. We'll see God face to face. And regardless of what we went through on earth, regardless of the suffering that we went through on this side of eternity, we will then see the one who's in control. We'll see the one who will solve it all. We'll see the one who will make sense of it all. And so we will not fear in heaven because, not because there's not something to fear. When Jesus says, hey, fear not, he told them that because there were some things that they were fixing to fear. It's not like, hey, fear not. There's no, hey, don't worry about what the enemy's doing. Hey, don't worry about the size of the army. Hey David, don't worry about Goliath and his his size and his height and his facial expressions and his words. Hey, uh, uh, Jarius, don't listen to those people that say your daughter's dead. Listen to me. So when we get to heaven, we'll have 100% attention and understanding of God's plan. So therefore, when we see what's happening on earth, we will have no sorrow, we'll have no pain. There's time in heaven. There was time in the garden of Eden, of Eden. When we look at heaven, we have to look at the garden before sin. We have to look at the mount of Transfiguration when Jesus met Moses and Elijah. We get glimpses of eternity like when we see Jesus's resurrected body after he is raised from the dead. We see these glimpses into heaven, especially in chapters 21 and 22 of Revelation. So is there time in heaven? Absolutely. God tells us that he would walk with Adam in the cool of the day, indicating temperature variance, indicating time variance, that there was a time for heat, there was a time for cool, that there was, there's seasons. God created seasons. He created seed time and harvest. He created these things that indicate time and season and 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 change. And so as we look at heaven, we'll answer a lot of these questions that we don't just turn into angels. We don't play harps and grow wings and sit on clouds and just have this life of no purpose. When we get to heaven, we'll have a job. Adam had a job. He was to manage the garden. God made Adam and Eve equal in value, but not equal in physical ability. They had different purposes. So when we look at heaven, we'll see this great variety. We'll have different skin color, different nationality, different differences that make each of us unique. You, when you go to heaven, you won't lose your identity. Now you may lose some pounds, amen, but you're not going to lose your identity. You, you may grow your hair back, amen, but you're not going to lose who you are. And so thank you for the question. I hope that helped clear it up a little bit. But turn with me tonight. I want to talk about bloodlines and kingdoms, bloodlines and kingdoms. So I realize as we're walking through the book of Revelation that it gets very confusing very quickly. So I kind of want to bring us back to some basis tonight. We've talked a lot. We've gone, we've covered so much territory in eight sessions. But tonight I want to kind of bring us back to the overall intent, the overall purpose of the Bible and God's agenda. I want us to see what God's up to. I want us to see what Satan's up to. And I want to see how those two interconnect or those two, when they meet at an intersection, when they, when they come together. I want to see how the two collide. I want to see, I want to show us how God destroys the plans of Satan. I want us to write down some things. I want you to write down that Satan is a created being. His name originally in the garden, in in heaven, I'm sorry, was Lucifer. He was created to worship God, but all angels, just like you and I, they have free will. They have the ability to choose. We're not robots. God doesn't want robots. God doesn't want us to to follow him out of fear. He wants us to follow him out of love and relationship. The same goes for the angels. We know in scripture that Satan chose, we read a little bit about that last night. We, we know that he chose as a created angel to rebel. He obviously had great power. In heaven, there's different ranks of angels. We see this in Ephesians six, when Paul talks to us about demonic ranks, when he talks about principalities in high places. He talks about the different orders or classification of fallen angels. We also know in heavenly realms, there's different jobs or positions for angels. They're not all equal. We have this idea that we get to heaven and we're all going to live in the same color house, the same size house, wear the same kind of clothes because we'll all be equal. That equality in our mind is twisted. We'll all have equal value, but we will all have different rewards. We'll have different positions. We'll have different lifelong purposes when we get to heaven. How can you say that based on all of Jesus's parables? To ones given five talents, to ones given two talents, to ones given one, these are all servants of God. Two of them choose to use their talents and God gives the one with five talents, he gives them five more. So he technically has 10 talents where the other guy's got four. That's inequality. One's got four, one's got 10. That doesn't mean they're lesser beings. They're not lesser children. They just have different positions, different, different purposes in God's kingdom. Some people will be rulers with God. Some people will be pillars in the house of God. Other people will have different positions. So when we look at heaven, we look at angels, let's make sure we understand that there are fallen angels and there are holy angels. There are angels who left heaven and followed Satan and went to hell. There are angels that kept their, their abode, that they kept their home. So we have these different styles of angels. We have cherubim angels, we had seraphim angels. We have angels that are ministering angels to Jesus in the garden of Gethsemane. We have warring angels like Michael. We have messenger angels like Gabriel. We have different angels in heaven. We have fallen angels that have different positions also. So when we think about angels, when we think about the afterlife, when we think about eternity, let's not be naive and just think that there's two styles of angels. There's God, there's Satan, there's demons, there's angels. That's not true. There's a difference. So let's follow that as we walk through scripture. So I want to start about bloodlines and kingdoms. So when we look at what God's agenda is, God's agenda is to bring the pure blood of Jesus Christ all through eternity, from the garden to the kingdom, from Eden to Zion. He wants the bloodline of Jesus to be preserved and protected to destroy the enemy. Can I get an amen? So he wants to establish his kingdom here on earth. He says, "In the Lord's prayer, thy kingdom come, thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven." Some of us think that heaven is way out in outer space. That's not true. When you look at the end of the book, at the chapters 21 and 22 of Revelation, heaven comes down to earth. A new heaven. Now, when it says a new heaven, it doesn't mean where God dwells. It means the, the atmosphere where birds fly, clouds are, plains are, those heavens. A new heaven and a new earth. And the city of Zion will come down and will, Jesus will establish his physical throne in Jerusalem, in Israel. The location it is in earth today. So the same Middle East country of Israel is where Jesus Christ will bring Mount, will bring the city of heaven, Zion, down to earth and will rule the earth from that position in his millennial reign and we'll get there. So I'm going a little bit ahead of us, but I want us to understand that God's ultimate agenda is to be here on earth with you and I again. He wants to be our father and son and daughter. He wants his kingdom to be here. He wants to see us face to face. So that's where we're headed. Now, what Satan's desire is, is to thwart that or or deter that. He is fooled by his own pride and his own sin that he can establish his kingdom. Now, what Satan is trying to do is establish a kingdom of tyrannical dictator demonic rule where God is trying to establish his kingdom of love, hope and faith through Jesus Christ. So we have two kingdom agendas. We have two bloodline agendas. We have, we'll look in the, in the garden in a minute in chapter three. We have the bloodline of Jesus that's been preserved. Satan has been trying to destroy the bloodline of Jesus. All the way to the cross, we'll see where God preserved the bloodline. So what I want to do is I want to take us back where Satan built his first kingdom, his first city, and how he desires to do that again. And we'll see some patterns where he has done that throughout eternal, or throughout the history of the world for the last 6,000 years. So let's dive in. Genesis, chapter three, verse 15. I want to take us back to the garden. Adam and Eve are created. Adam and Eve are with God. Adam and Eve are perfect. Adam and Eve are sin free. Adam and Eve are the most brilliant, smartest beings to ever walk the earth. Evolution tells us that we're getting smarter. Evolution is a lie. We didn't come from apes. We didn't come from cosmic soup. We didn't come from a big bang. We came from the word of God. Evolution will tell us that mankind is getting smarter or more intelligent. Let's not confuse technology with intelligence. The Bible says that Adam and Eve were the best created beings. They were perfect. They were good. Their minds functioned at 100% capabilities. Their DNA was, was 100% perfect. They would have never died. Now think about that. They had complete recall. They never would get sick. They never would have died. Their bodies never would have broken down. But sin entered the world and messed that up. So in fact, mankind is breaking down generation by generation. Our DNA is weakening by generation to generation. So when we look at scripture, let's look backwards and go, wow, they knew probably more than we know. They understood things. They may not have had air conditioning and iPhones, but they understood and grasped God, creation, much better than we have. So we've got to go back and learn some things. Genesis, chapter three, the snake Satan, the serpent is in the garden and he's talking. He's talking to Eve. He fools Eve into, into eating the apple or eating the fruit. Adam's with Eve. He fails as a husband. He doesn't protect her. He's not off fishing. He's not off hunting. He's not off praying, studying with God. No, he's with Eve. He doesn't stop her. He doesn't protect her. So we see the breakdown right there. Genesis, chapter three, God has, and in my mind, he's got Satan here. He's got Adam here. He's got Eve here. He's got them lined up. He's going, hey, uh, did y'all eat the fruit? Did you, did you deceive them? Here's your punishment. So God's doling out their punishment in Genesis, chapter three. Now check out what he says in Genesis, chapter three, 15. He's talking to the snake. He's talking to Satan. Now I want you to grasp this. Satan hates God. Satan hates God. But he also knows, even though he hates God, he knows if God says it, it will happen. He does know the power of God, whether he respects it or not, whether he honors it, follows it, adheres to it or not. He at least knows if God says something, he's bound by his own word because he can't lie. So if Satan in his mind, if he can manipulate what God said, then he could stop God. He's deceived, but that's his agenda. So let's read this with that understanding. Genesis, chapter three, verse 15. Adam and Eve have sinned. God's got them all three lined up. He's talking to the snake. He says to the snake, he says, "Because you've done this," verse 14. "So the Lord God said to the serpent, 'Because you've done this, you're cursed more than the cattle and more than every beast of the field. On your belly you shall go and you shall eat dust all the days of your life.'" 15, here's the kicker. Hey devil, hey snake, hey Satan, I will put enmity between you and the woman. Interesting words. I'll put enmity. I'm making you an enemy. I'm putting a war. There's in enemies. There's in enmity between you and the woman. Not between her and the man, but her and the woman, him and the woman. I put enmity between you and the woman, between your seed and her seed. He has a capital H. This is the first reference to Jesus the Messiah. He, talking about the seed of the woman, he will crush your head or bruise your head. In other words, strip your authority. That's what the scroll, remember my scroll demonstration? It's back there somewhere. That's what the scroll is all about. Adam gives Satan the deed when he sins. God says, hey, listen, the lady, she's going to have a seed. She'll have a baby. He's going to crush your authority. You'll strike his heel. That's how the verse ends. You'll strike his heel. You'll hurt her seed, but he'll destroy you. So what God told, what God told the snake in the garden is, hey, listen, the lady here, she's going to have a baby. And her baby will crush you. He'll destroy you. He'll crush your head. That's why Matthew 28, God says, Mark 16, God says to you and I, we have authority over Satan. If Jesus lives in your heart, we will step on the heads of snakes. We'll step on the head of the enemy. We do not have to succumb to his intimidating power because Jesus, fast forwarding 4,000 years, took his power away at the cross. That's good news. Back to the garden. God tells Eve, hey, listen, she's going to have a baby. The baby will destroy you. So right then and there, whether Satan likes God or not, whether he loves God or not, he's afraid and he now sees the woman as his enemy. So what's the first thing that Adam and Eve do? They have to leave the garden, not because God's mad, but because God wants them to then die. The best thing that could have ever happened for them to do was to die. God removed them from the garden so that they couldn't reach out and eat from the tree of life. The first reward to the overcomer in Revelation two is to eat from the tree of life. So the first thing God wants you to do when you get to heaven is to have overcome a heart that went loveless. He wants you to stay in love with him. The first thing you'll get to do is eat from the tree of life and then you'll live forever. That's what gives us eternal bodies. When Adam and Eve were removed from the garden, the best thing that would have happened to them, that could have happened to them is God says, you must die. Well, pastor, that doesn't sound very good. They have to die. No, it's the best thing. Otherwise they would have lived forever in sin because they would still eat from the tree of life. Could you imagine you and I living forever? It sounds good hypothetically. Sounds cool, but we would live in sin forever. It's the best thing that we die from this body and go and live for eternity where there is no sin. Can I get an amen? That's, that's enough for you to shout. So Adam and Eve leave the garden. They have Cain and Abel. If you're the devil, who are you afraid of the most right now? Are you afraid of Adam? No, you don't like Adam. He reminds you of God. Are you afraid of Eve? No, not really. You just don't like her because she reminds you of God. You are afraid. If you're the devil, you're afraid. Oh, she had two baby boys. One of them's the Messiah. We have to remember Satan doesn't know who the Messiah is at this point. He has no idea when the Messiah will be born. He's never heard of Bethlehem. He's never heard of the Virgin Mary. He's never heard of King Herod. He has no clue. Satan is not all knowing. He's not everywhere at once and he's not all powerful. God is not Satan. We cannot put them as equal foes. Satan sees Adam and Eve have Cain and Abel. He goes, one of those two boys is the Messiah. One of those two boys is going to kill me. So he tries to corrupt them both. Abel's incorruptible. Abel doesn't bend to the temptation of Satan. But Cain does. So Cain kills Abel. Satan's going, yeah, got him. Destroyed God's plan. Well, we know the end of the story. Get to chapter four, verse one. God tells Adam, hey, listen, I'm going to give you Seth to replace Abel. Now, a really cool study, and this will come together in our look at Revelation. If you have our study notes, you need to look at the first 10 generations of the men listed in Genesis, chapter five. It says, "So and so was this old and begot so and so, who begot so and so, and he was this old and he begot so and so, and he was this old." I used to think God was bored. He needed to get so many books or chapters in the Bible, so he just added a bunch of filler. That's totally not right. Those are not filler. So and so begat, so and so begat, so and so. Is God proving to you that his bloodline from Adam is intact all the way to Jesus? That Jesus is of the bloodline, the proper bloodline? So this revelation study, we need to look at, at, at the first 10 generations in Genesis, chapter five. Interesting, and you can get this if you, if you go to WhitestoneChurchTX and request our notes. The first man's created was Adam. His name is, his name is Adam. The second man in the lineage of Jesus is Seth. The third Seth's son is Enosh. Enosh's son is Kenan. Kenan is Malahel. Jared is, is his son. Jared has Enoch. Enoch has Methuselah. Methuselah, Methuselah has a boy named Lamech and Lamech has a boy named Noah. So from Adam to Noah is exactly 10 generations. Biblically, it takes about 2,000 years because in this day and time, these guys are living to be 900, 700, 800 years old. You didn't die at the age of 80 by natural causes in this day and age because their DNA wasn't broke down like ours is. There's truth to that. Now, if you just look at the Hebrew name, meaning, the meaning of their name. Adam's name means man. Okay, that makes sense. Adam's the first man. The word Adam means man in Hebrew. Seth means appointed. Seth was appointed to replace Abel. So we, we like to look up, especially when we're naming babies, we like to look up, well, what's the name Cameron mean? Oh, brilliant, beautiful, kind, best. Oh, I, I think that's what it says. I don't know. But you can look up your name, your meaning. So this is the Hebrew name of E, of Enosh means mortal. Kenan means sorrow. Malahel means the blessed God. Jared means shall come down. Enoch means teaching. Methuselah means his death shall bring. Lamech means the despairing and Noah means comfort or rest. An interesting study that will blow your mind is if you just look at the first 10 men who represent the first 10 generations of God's bloodline that preserved for Jesus. If you put the name meanings of their name in order, this is the sentence you'll get. The sentence you'll get if you just put them in order and only God could have done this. Man is appointed mortal sorrow. Adam was appointed mortal sorrow. But the blessed God shall come down teaching that his death shall bring the despairing rest. Is that cool or what? This is in your Bible and this will tell us that the bloodline of Jesus is vital. Now I want to get to back to Satan for a second. Satan is around for 2,000 years before the flood. In Hebrew, in according to the Bible, the world is 6,000 years old. It's 2,000 years and the flood happens. That happens in the first six chapters of your Bible. From the flood to the birth of Jesus is another 2,000 years. And from the birth of Jesus to today is another 2,000 years, give or take. So biblically, the world is 6,000-ish years old. Now, for the first 2,000 years, Satan says, okay, Cain and Abel, I can kill the Messiah. I can kill the boy. Cain is sent to another land. Seth is the replacement. Seth has a boy. Seth has another boy. They have children. Satan cannot start to kill everybody. He can't convince them to kill each other. So if you're Satan, what are you afraid of? You're afraid that you don't know who the Messiah is. You don't know which one of these boys being born is going to crush your head. He's going to take back the authority. He's going to take back the scroll. You don't know who it is. So Satan's plot is revealed in Genesis, chapter six. Now Genesis, chapter six, we are introduced to a people group or a creature group called the Nephilim. The Nephilim are babies born from fallen angels with earthly women. And their offspring are called Nephilim or giants or in your scripture, mighty men of renown. Now, before you lose me and you turn, turn off Facebook or YouTube or whatever, stick with me because there is a lot of truth to the myths and the mythology and the legends and the stories that are pagan. There's a root. They come from a root of truth. Satan twists them generation after generation to get people to fall away. Look with me at Genesis, chapter six, verse one. "Now it came to pass, when men began to multiply on the face of the earth, and daughters were born to them." Now you got to read slow. You need to read what it's saying. I'm reading out the New King James Version. Now it came to pass, when men began to multiply, who began to multiply? Men on the earth. And daughters were born to who? Born to men. Now listen to the word very closely. "That the sons of God saw the daughters of men." The sons of God there are not men. They are angels. Angels are referred to as sons of God. You and I, when we receive Jesus, we become sons and daughters of God. But the wording here differentiates between sons of God and the previous scripture where it says, "Daughters were born to men who were on the earth." The sons of God is not a reference to men. It's a reference to angels. Verse two. "The sons of God saw the daughters of men, a distinction, a clarity." Angels see daughters of men. "That they were beautiful, and so they took wives..." That they were beautiful, and so they took wives for themselves of all whom they chose. And the Lord said, my spirit shall not strive with man forever, for he is indeed flesh, yet his day shall be one hundred and twenty years. Now, a lot of us have taken that verse to mean, well, nobody could live more than a hundred and twenty years. Well, that's not true cuz after that, a lot of people lived past a hundred and twenty. That's actually a reference to God's gonna flood the world in a hundred and twenty days, a hundred and twenty years. He's telling them, hey, look, I'm not gonna strive with you forever. Hundred and twenty years. Let the clock start ticking. I want us to see that God's given us clues to what he's gonna do, all through scripture. We have to have eyes to see and ears to hear. Verse four, the kicker. There were giants, if you're reading out the NIV, it says Nephilim. There were giants or Nephilim, Genesis, chapter six, verse four. There were giants in those, on the earth in those days, and also afterward. Now, that word afterward, I don't wanna chase too many rabbits, but this was written by Moses after the flood on the Mount Sinai, when he's getting the Ten Commandments, God's dictating to him how the world was created and what happened. So Moses is writing down what God told him. Are you with me? And it says giants were on the earth in those days, and also afterwards, when the sons of God came to the daughters of men and bore children to them. Those were the mighty men who were of old, men of renown. Now, we'll see that wording all through scripture, and if we're just breezing through it, we'll go, oh, that those were mighty men versus slave men. Those were kingly men versus lowly men. No, no, no. This is a reference to a half-breed Nephilim. Now, fast forward a little bit. What I mean by half-breed, what angels, what sons of God would dare take wives of men and have babies with them? Holy angels or fallen angels? Of course, the fallen angels who have no respect for God. They fol- they followed Satan. Why would Satan want his fallen angels to go down and have sex with women on the earth and have babies? Let me let you think about it. Why would he do that? Because he's out to taint the bloodline of Christ. He can't kill them all. Let's taint their DNA. Let's taint their bloodline. The fallen angels in scripture have wrecked havoc on mankind. Fallen angels taught men so-called secrets, wisdom. They've taught men sorcery, fortune-telling, uh incantations, necromancy. They've taught us witchcraft and perversion. These fallen angels have come down and had sex with women, and their offspring are what are called giants. In the Greek, they would've been called Titans or Gigantes in Hebrew or Nephilim. Now, we'll see this all through scripture, but we just didn't learn this in Sunday school. David, when he goes to fight a giant named Goliath. Oh, yeah, he fought. That guy was big, man. He was bigger than than Arnold Schwarzenegger, man. He was big. No, no, no. It wasn't that he was just a big guy. Let's think that through clearly. If he was just a nine-foot-tall ripped, you know, Samson-ish or Conan the Barbarian and and he was Rambo on steroids or or more, let me, on more steroids, uh I mean, he was like Rambo. If if Goliath was just this this big guy, why would forty thousand seasoned Israeli soldiers be afraid of him? Listen, he may kill him one-on-one, but man, let's send a hundred guys. He can't kill a hundred of us. He can't kill five hundred. He certainly can't kill all of us. The reason is because they're giants. These were half-breeds. The twelve spies go into the promised land. They go, there's giants in the land. And we are but like grasshoppers to them. That's not just exaggeration. That is this half-breed invasion that Satan sent to the earth to corrupt and stop the bloodline of Jesus. Cameron, what the heck does all this have to do with with Revelation? We're getting there, trust me. So I want you to understand that the Bible is deeper than we've given it credit for. And it answers more questions. I don't have time to, we're not doing a study of the Nephilim tonight, but I want you to grasp this concept. That these half-breed demonic DNA destroying agents of Satan corrupted the entire earth. Now, if you don't believe me, look at Genesis, chapter six, verse nine. Genesis six, verse nine, why would God choose Noah? Now, remember, Noah's the tenth of Adam. Adam's his tenth grandpa, great, 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 whatever. Noah, in chapter nine, verse nine of chapter six of Genesis, this is what it says. But, uh let me just read verse eight. But Noah found grace in the eyes of God. This is the genealogy. This is the genealogy of Noah. Noah was a just man, perfect in his generations. Noah's bloodline did not mix with Nephilim or fallen angel bloodline. Noah has three sons, Ham, Shem, and Japheth. Ham corrupts his bloodline. Japheth corrupts his bloodline, but Shem does not. Shem continues to trust God. The other two, we can go into it later, they do. They corrupt themselves. The bloodline of Jesus is preserved. Look with me to Genesis, chapter ten. We're gonna look at the first kingdom or city that Satan built. And when we understand what Satan built in Genesis ten and eleven, we'll understand what he built in other places in scripture. Other kingdoms and cities. We'll see how he learns from his mistakes and tries bigger and better, and he tries bigger and better. And he keeps getting destroyed by God. It's pretty funny. But he's continuing to build his kingdom. And when we can trace back the types of cities and kingdoms Satan's built, it can help us understand what he's building for the end of times. Because the beast system, the beast city is where the Antichrist will rise up out of, and it's this city, this system that's going to fool and destroy mankind even before it's seducing us before the Antichrist makes his name on the scene. We're falling for it today. Look at this in chapter ten of Genesis, or chapter nine. Um, chapter nine. Let me find my spot here. Uh, chapter ten, I'm sorry. Chapter ten, verse eight. Kush begot Nimrod. Now Kush is from Ham, Ham's descendant. Nimrod Kush has a son named Nimrod. Verse, chapter ten of Genesis, verse eight. Nimrod, he began to be a mighty one on the earth, the same terminology, mighty men. Many people believe that Nimrod here is a Nephilim, a half-giant or a half-breed. He was a mighty hunter before the Lord. Therefore, it is said, like Nimrod, the mighty hunter before the Lord. And the beginning of his kingdom was Babel. Now, listen, before you misinterpret the Hebrew here, saying, oh, he was a mighty hunter before God. He was for God. No, no, no. He was a mighty hunter that hated God. He was hunting God. He was hunting down God's descendants. He was out to destroy God and his sons. He hated God. Nimrod is the root word for rebellion against God. This man was corrupt to the core. He's the first shadow or the first foretelling of a demon-possessed Antichrist. And his first city is a city named Babel, which the root of Babel means confusion and chaos. Everything about Satan is confusion and chaos. When you feel confused and you feel double-minded and you feel depressed and you feel down and you feel up one minute and down the next minute, that's chaos. That's confusion. That's a spirit sent from Satan. That's a spirit of confusion. That's witchcraft. That's a Jezebel spirit. We bind those and we cast those out in the name of Jesus. We have control and power. Oh, we don't, we don't, we can't control him. God controlled. We have power over the enemy. And God chooses if he sends him to the pigs, sends him to the pit, what he wants to do with him. Nimrod, back to Nimrod, he builds this city named Babel. Now, Babel was a city that their focus was to build a tower, an epicenter. Um, let me, let me read what I wrote about Nimrod. Nimrod, he'll make rebellion. He will make rebellion. He's a hunter against God. Oh, interesting thing, Esau, Jacob's brother, Jacob and Esau, who sold his birthright for a bowl of beans. A lot of uh extracurricular biblical texts would state that Esau's the one that killed Nimrod. And so he came back cuz he wanted world domination also. So just interesting, uh um I don't know that I could trace that back to uh but Esau most likely killed Nimrod, just side note. Babel was the city that Nimrod built to defy God and to defy God's directive. Now, what did God tell Noah the day he got off the boat? He said, go and populate the earth. Be fruitful and multiply, separate. Now, the biggest fear, if you and I had been on the boat and we were one of the eight, the biggest fear we would have is God's gonna flood us again, and maybe the next time we won't make it. Oh, my God, oh, my God. God promises through the rainbow, I'll never flood the earth again. Shem believed it. Noah and his wife believed it. Ham didn't. Japheth didn't. Their wives, they didn't. They disregarded the mandate of God. So instead of flourishing and separating and populating, like he told Adam and Eve when they left the garden, they stayed together. They built a tower. They defied the directive of God. The tower that was built at Babel was to get high enough so that if God did flood the world again, he would never de- he couldn't destroy him. They would be up in this secure place. But it was also a tower built to reach the heavens, scripture says. Now, that doesn't mean they were trying to, you know, go higher than the space shuttle or something like that. It means that they were demonically accessing powers of demonic source taught to them from the Nephilim on how to uh uh use witchcraft and demonology to control people and to battle and destroy God. The Babel was a city built to defy God in this directive. Babel was the center of witchcraft, demon worship, human sacrifice, idolatry, pride, commerce, economic, man, education. Uh, this idea that science is gonna take us to to uh truth. Um, this idea that this was the first, this was the Antichrist's first throne, his first city. And from that directive, he was going to rule the world. This was the center for pagan and demonic worship of Nimrod. Nimrod married his wife, his Nimrod's wife was also his mother. Uh, it's pretty gross. Nimrod's wife was his mother, and this began the pagan worship and idolatry. This city, this system and mindset, listen to this, what I wrote earlier, this city, this system and this mindset will be resurrected for in for the end times throne of the Antichrist and false prophet. It is Satan's MO. Satan raised up an Antichrist by the name of Nimrod, who marries his wife and is re- and is quote-unquote resurrected, uh and he marries his mother, who becomes his wife, I apologize. Marries his mother, who becomes his wife, and their baby, he's killed. Their baby is supposedly Nimrod resurrected or reincarnated. It's it's this crazy thing. Um, I'm I'm fumbling through that a little bit. You can read it for yourself. But but Genesis, chapter eleven, listen to what is said. This is God's statement. The people at the city of Babel. Come, let us build for ourselves a city, a tower whose top is in the heavens, and let us make a name for ourselves. Now, on the surface, we'll read that and go, oh, yeah, um kinda like New York City wants to make a name for itself, or this company or this athlete or this movie star, they just wanna make a name for themselves. No, no, no. A name to worship. They wanna make a God to worship for themselves. They're not out to impress somebody else. They're looking for this name to worship. Now, that name, Nimrod's glad to be the name. The Antichrist is glad to be the name or the shadow of the Antichrist. Um, go down to verse seven. God says this. This is the coolest thing, and 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 we just, we just don't know this well enough. God says this, let us go down there and confuse our language, that they may not understand one another's speech. Let's go down there, let's throw them away. Let's, I know they're all talk, they're all talking, uh, you know, English, but let's go down there and just confuse them with a bunch of different languages. And uh there's no way they'll understand each other, and they'll give up their futile attempt to come against us. Interestingly enough, a lot of scholars believe that there is about seventy different languages that came out of Babel. I promise you, we're going somewhere. Seventy different people groups start to scatter across planet earth. So over years and times, they they have their own language, so therefore they develop their own culture. They develop their own lifestyle. They have their own territory. So some are mountainous people, some are desertous people, some are by the by the ocean, some are farmer, you know, I mean, they got different, they they naturally go to different places and they go to different uh uh climates and different regions and and they become their own people, but they remember their worship. Now, here's the crazy thing, and we don't, it it's just the coolest thing when we start to put all this together. They don't love God. Even though they're scattered, they hate God. They still worship Nimrod. But now they have different names for him. They call him something different because their culture through the years that gets passed down. Yeah, the guy that we worshipped and the lady that we worshipped and their son that they worshipped. They become, they call them by different names. So in your notes, we have these other names for Nimrod that come through culture. So I'm just gonna read some of them. Other cultures have known Nimrod or called him Arius, Dionys, Hermes, Pluto, Hades, Poseidon, Zeus, um Cronos, for those of you that are big Avenger movie fans, Marduk, Saturn, Jupiter, Pluto, uh Cupid, Mars, Odin, for those of you that like Thor. Uh, those aren't just made-up names, by the way. It's really demonology that we're entertaining ourselves with. Tamas, um Molek, Baal, Dagon. On your notes, it's interesting. If you look at Dagon, he's the fish god. Uh, and if you look closely, it's very reminiscent of one of the world's largest coffee companies uh as their logo. Um, Nimrod is a man of many different names. Mil- Mil- Gilgamesh, Baal, um Oron, uh Orion, sorry. Um Apollo, Ra, uh from Egypt, Osiris. So I put in your notes these different package, and you'll see these different symbols that are identifiers, and one of them is even on the back of our dollar bill. And you, and before, again, before you lose me, just hear me out. This is real stuff. Satan's Antichrist has been rising up through generations uh all throughout the history of the world. Um, Tamas, his son, uh who would be quote-unquote the Savior, is known as Krishna in India, is known as um Hercules in Assyrian uh mythology, uh Tamas to the Israelites, Asherah, um Aphrodite. Um, you know, uh ISIS, but not the gang from the middle, you know, not the not the terrorist group, but the goddess. Uh, these are all just different names, and you can, you can look at that on your notes. Um, but but here's what I want you to read on your notes. God makes his own nation. God makes his own nation. Listen, the coolest thing that happens is in Genesis, chapter twelve. And this is what God's doing. God is about building his kingdom. After Babel, everybody's scattered. That's Genesis, chapter ten and eleven. Well, then what? We don't really know much. Most of us just know, oh, yeah, the story of Tower of Babel. And then we don't know anything. Then we're like, oh, yeah, there's Father Abraham, and uh he had, you know, uh this boy named Isaac, and he put him on the altar. But where did Isaac come from? Or where did Abraham come from? Where did Abram come from? Interesting. Now, check this out. You're God, I'm Godless. We're we're just pretending for a minute. Uh, we're looking at earth and we just scattered everybody, and we realize they're still following Nimrod. They're still worshiping this Antichrist, this world dictator, this false deity. And so we go from nation to nation. We go to people group to people group. We go to all these different nations going, I wonder if anybody there loves me. I wonder if they love me. No, 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 they're worshiping Osiris. They're over here worshiping Cronos. They're over here worshiping Baal. They're over here. So God makes, in Genesis, chapter twelve, it's the coolest thing ever, God makes his own nation. And that is the beginning of Israel. It's the Hebrew nation. That's his kingdom. That's his people. Those are his chosen ones. Read it for yourself in, in Genesis, end of eleven, the first of twelve. Shem, who's Noah's son, comes off the ark, he has a son named Nahor. Nahor has a son named Tara. Tara has a son named Abram. God goes to Abram in Genesis, chapter twelve, and says this, Abram, get out of your country. Yeah, leave that language, leave those people group, they don't love me. Yeah, they're called the Chaldean, leave that country. Leave your family and your father's house and go to a land. A land, a promised land. Go to a land that I'll show you, and I will make you a great nation. Abram, I'm gonna make you a nation, I'm gonna make a nation nobody's ever heard of. I don't, I don't need people to discover their own, no, 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 I'm gonna make a nation. We're gonna call it Israel, you're gonna be a Jew, you're gonna be a Jewish nation. I'm gonna make a nation. And I'll make your name great, I will bless you, and you will be a blessing, I will bless those who bless you. And I'll curse him who curses you, and in you and all the families of the earth shall be blessed. In you, Abram, all the families in the earth shall be blessed. Listen, end times is about Jesus making his nation. It's about preserving the bloodline of Christ. Read it for yourself, Matthew one, Luke three, gives the genealogy of Jesus, and you'll see it, it, it's beautiful when it opens up to you. God makes his own nation. Why is the name of Jesus so important for end times? Matthew twenty-four, five says, for many will come in my name, saying, I am the Christ. Many will come in my name, saying, I am the Christ, I'm the way, follow me. Mark thirteen, many will come in my name, saying, I am he, and mislead many. Genesis Exodus twenty says this, thou shall have no other gods before me. Thou shalt not make into the engraving image a likeness of anything in heaven or on earth or beneath the earth or in the water underneath the earth. God's saying, don't worship these false gods. Satan's MO is to get us to worship false gods. What does this have to do with today in Revelation? It's the battle between two cities. So it's the battle between two kingdoms. In the end times, it's gonna be a battle against Israel and Jerusalem, Jeru-Salem, Salem. Jeru-Salem, Jerusalem, it will be the battle between two cities. And in those two cities will be two kingdoms. So Jerusalem will represent God. Babylon or the resurrected Babylon will be the city of Satan, the Antichrist. The Jewish people are at the center of Jesus's parables. My beautiful bride will not let me forget the reason. And the reason is this, if we wanna understand Revelation, we have to go back and look at the parables of Jesus. And we've got to understand them, and we've got to understand like the parable of the fig tree. When Jesus is talking about the fig tree, it represents Jerusalem. When he's talking about the ten virgins, it's representing that we as believers, whether Jew or Gentile, that that parable is about us, that some of us will let our oil go out, and that oil means the Holy Spirit. Oh, well, I, I thought, thought I was secure, listen, read the parables. An interesting thing is, on your notes, is in May fourth, May fourteenth, nineteen forty-eight, Israel became a nation. Now, Israel is at the center of this thing. Jesus could not return before May fourteenth, nineteen forty-eight, because Israel was not a nation. Jesus Christ himself says this generation will not pass before seeing these things, talking about Revelation. So I am saying this, that as we continue to walk through Revelation, we have to understand that Satan is always behind, but he is a, he is a determined foe. He is determined to set up his Babylonian confusion, chaotic kingdom that will be undergirded with great satanic demonology, witchcraft, greed, selfishness, pride, arrogance, sexual perversion, do what you want, just don't hurt anybody. Just be, be who you are, don't worry about God, there's no God. His kingdom is built on those philosophies and those morals. God's kingdom will be established through his people, through Jerusalem. He will establish his throne back in Jerusalem. So when we read, when we get back to the book of Revelation, and we read about the hundred and forty-four thousand who are sealed, those are Jewish people who will proclaim the gospel of Jesus Christ, not Judaism. They will proclaim that Jesus is God, Jesus is Jehovah, he is Yahweh. And they will bring the biggest revival that the world has ever seen. Their message, their preaching will bring the biggest revival the world has ever seen. Jesus Christ is coming back, he's coming back soon. The closer we get to end times, the closer we get to the return of Christ, the higher the heat is turned up. Satan knows his time is short. He knows that he, he is defeated, but he's fighting and trying, he's deceived himself to believe that he could win. We'll pick it up back tomorrow night, we'll pick up where we're leaving off, but I wanna say this. That the book of Revelation is written about a wedding, about a supper, and about a kingdom. The Antichrist will be a real person, the false prophet will be a real person. They will set up two, two real kingdoms, one will be a physical kingdom that will rule the world governmentally, militaristically, economically, and educationally, entertainment, news-wise, everything will be ruled by this person. But the false prophet will work hand in hand, he'll be his second in charge, his two and C. He will be the false prophet that will mandate and corrupt the religions of the world to worship the Antichrist. This system is already in its, in its, it's already here, the system's here. The Antichrist, we don't know when he will, when he will come up out of that system. What I, what my goal for this teaching is that you and I will see the system and stay away from it, we'll see it in our entertainment. We'll say, no, no, that's a demonic Babylon, Nimrod descendant system. I'm not laughing at those jokes, I'm not watching that entertainment, no, that's not sci-fi, that's demify, that's demonology. That's not, that, that's not holy. Wow, that mindset of grab all you can, and, and, you know, I'm number one, and this life, you know. We've gotta see it for what it is. See that Satan is setting up a, a city. See that he's setting up a city, see that he's setting up a government, see that he's setting up control. See that God is setting up a kingdom. I'll close with this, Jesus's best friends, um, and even Judas to a degree. I call them his best friends, the twelve disciples, his boys. Time and time again, for the first three and a half years of, of Jes-, for the, for the three and a half years of Jesus's ministry, they would say, Jesus, when are you setting up your kingdom? When are we gonna set up the kingdom? Hey, can I sit at your right hand? Can I sit, can I be, can I be in charge of, of the armies? Could I, hey, could you, they want to know when he was gonna set up his kingdom. They weren't, they weren't, um, misinformed, they were good Hebrew boys that understood the Old Testament. They were misinformed to the degree that they thought Jesus was gonna destroy Caesar. They thought he was gonna destroy Rome and set up his earthly kingdom then there in Jerusalem. They didn't grasp the satanic kingdom that Jesus had to destroy first. The satanic kingdom, Jesus destroyed it on the cross. And in Corinthians, it says, if Satan would have known killing Jesus on the cross would have destroyed him, he never would have done it. Satan doesn't have a clue what he's doing. Jesus destroyed him on the cross, then he went to hell, took the keys to hell, set the captives free, and he's in control of everything. Satan's on the run, but he's still trying to set up his kingdom. God is setting up his kingdom, but his kingdom is gonna come at the end after his return. After the rapture, after the return, then his kingdom comes down from heaven. So what we have to see is his kingdom today is a spiritual one. It's a kingdom of holiness. And what we have to be aware of is to get out of this kingdom of darkness. The kingdom of darkness, I'm not gonna say is getting darker, cuz I'm not gonna give the enemy credit. But it's getting more intense, and it's getting more prevalent, and it's getting more accepted. But you and I, we have twenty-twenty vision through the power of the word of God and the Holy Spirit. So Father God, I pray tonight that you give a supernatural vision, not to see the devil, not to see demons, but to see you, God. Like Elijah's servants, open our eyes so that we cannot just see what the enemy's doing, but we'll see that you are with us, and we got a thousand chariots of fire surrounding us, and there's more with us that we cannot see than those who are what we can see. God, open our eyes like on the day of Pentecost, let us see tongues of fire. Let us see them. God, let not our, our false belief prevent us from seeing. So God, I pray that all barriers to the gospel, whether that's false teaching, whether that's heresy, God, that those will be stripped away to everyone listening to my voice. That God, that you would open our eyes to see. And God, that we could see what's happened in your scripture, and we'll be able to see what's happening in the day that we live in. And God, we'll look at what's going on in Israel today, and we'll see the fig tree. We'll see the, the Antichrist kingdom being built, we'll see the enemy's agenda. But God, it won't bring us to fear and intimidation, because we'll see the one who's in control, Jesus the Christ, the King of all kings. The Lord of Lord, the Lord of all lords. God bless you, thank you for joining us. Listen, whitestonechurchtx.com, you can get our notes, if you got a prayer request, email us there on the contact page. Um, love you, we'll be with you, uh, tomorrow night for session ten. And uh, we'll be about halfway through the book of Revelation. God bless you, thank you for coming.